Here we go. We're gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order. I'm gonna talk really slow until Mickey gets back.
It's okay, it's fine.
I assume all these are working.
They're on the big speakers.
All right, are we good now? Everybody hear me back in the back?
Yes.
You know, I think it's pretty funny that the deputies usually sit there and now they're over there running from you guys, so. I didn't want to bring it up, but I, you know. What I like to do first is start off before we move right into the meeting, just have a moment of silence. You know, recently, we we have had our former mayor, Mayor Frazier, who was so impactful in our town for 16 years to help the movement, to really lead the way. I believe Councilman Dotson served under him for a long time. I was under him. I think Mickey, I think so. But and Ken, everybody. So, you know, he was very instrumental in moving our town forward and made it is 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 help us start moving it to where it is today and where it's going to go. So I'd like to take a moment, just bow our heads in a moment of silence to honor former Mayor Frazier. All right, thank you so much. He will be missed, but not forgotten. Let's move right into our Thursday, February 13, 2025 Town Council meeting. As always, we open our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, and tonight we have a special guest in the back row. You can come on up this way because we're gonna embarrass you. Well, not really. So as always, we stand out, we face the flag, and this is Sergeant Norton, right? Come on up. You can lead the pledge. Our flag is there, so when you're ready. In front of, we're using everybody who does that, but I'm making you say it. All right, here we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I'll leave you alone for a couple more minutes. All right, can I have a motion to also, we do have Councilwoman, Councilwoman Healy online. I think she can hear us.
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. The only one that is absent, excuse absent tonight, is is Councilwoman Cabler. So can I get a motion to approve the agenda as submitted? So moved, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Perfect, thank you. In your package, as always, I want to let everyone out in the audience know that you can go to our board docs, go to our website, you can go to board docs, you can see everything we're seeing. You can download it, take a look at it. So get a chance, check it out. What I want to do now is I motion to approve the minutes from the January 23, 2025 Town Council meeting as submitted.
So moved.
We got a motion, do I have a second? We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yep, saw the hand. Motion to approve the February 6, 2025 work session minutes as submitted.
So moved.
So moved, do I have a second? We have a second. Any discussion?
Uh, Mary, did you?
Mary has.
No, no, I jumped the gun.
Motion to, so we have a motion, we have a second, no discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now, here's the best part. Other than the egg rolls not coming, we won't bring that up right now. We are blessed each and every year to have this wonderful group in the back, and I was gonna wear my hat tonight, and I should have, and I forgot. I apologize. Uh, you know, we do this polar plunge thing, and a lot of council members, one day, Councilman Dotson's gonna do it again, you know. And Paul, because I'm gonna make his daughter and his son pick him on them.
When the entire council does it, I'll be right there.
All right, y'all heard that. It's a challenge. But each and every year, we do the polar plunge, and we have such a great turnout. Staff does an amazing job. And then recently, the Ladies of Charity have really stepped up and got involved in the polar plunge. So way it works is that there's an entry fee if you want to get into it and get a shirt, you can do advertisement. And after expenses, we have the luxury and the pleasure to give, donate the Ladies of Charity a check. If you don't know who the Ladies of Charity, don't look at their website, go to their YouTube page. That will tell you everything you need to know about who these ladies are. I do have a couple cameos in those videos, so it's a good day. So tonight, we have the honor of giving this check to them that's gonna help feed the needy. And if you haven't been able to get by there on the day of, not the big holidays, you'll get overwhelmed with the big holidays. But just the weekly stuff and how hard they work, what an asset to our community. What a proud moment to be a North Beach resident. So tonight, we have an amazing check. And we're gonna do a photo. And what we're gonna pass on tonight is checked for $12,892.06. Our photographer to the right, like if all, all the members come up here and stand in front, also staff, please come and mingle in with them. We're gonna stand behind. We wanna do some photos. Y'all can, well, whatever way it worked to get us all in. Everybody, come on, Liz. That's Stacy, everybody. I want, y'all, my hat's coming down here.
No, I know.
Yeah, come on, come on. Brian.
There you go.
Come on, can you see all of us, Bessie? I'll get Bessie somewhere. I don't know where. Thank you, ladies. Here's the envelope. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Yeah, yeah, please do.
The Ladies of Charity would like to thank Mayor Benton, Town Council, and all the staff members. You are so, so supportive of our organization association, and we truly appreciate it. We will be having a ribbon cutting, grand opening. We're hoping sometime in June, you're all invited, you will get an invitation. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Let Hall know that we are very disappointed, but we won't, you know. All right, let's keep rocking. So let's move right into the Town Administrator Report. You do have a copy in your board docs.
Ready? Good evening, council members. Linda Visal of the Town Administrator. I'm gonna briefly walk through this report. It's kind of lengthy this month. But I wanted to jump down and just let you know that next month, we're gonna be bringing in the staff recommended budget for FY26. We'll have a really strong projected revenue and expenditure report, and we're making sure that it aligns with our priorities and maintaining our fiscal responsibility. We presented the CIP last week, so that will not be part of the presentation at the next board meeting, but we'll come back for final approval when we approve your budget. We also have been working on several large-scale requests for proposals. You'll meet one of our new staff, Amanda Odell. She's gonna be talking with you tonight about a different proposal, but we're really making a lot of progress, getting that organized, all of our contract organized and in place. And we've been talking to the council about integrating our project task management system, Zendesk, which is fully integrated now. So you all will be added to that, and you'll start getting emails, so I'll need to come in and get you trained on that. It's pretty easy, basically just email. We have been meeting, I have been meeting weekly with the new Town Administrator from Chesapeake Beach, and that's going very well. It's a very productive and positive relationship so far. We met earlier this week to talk about the comprehensive plan update, which is tentatively scheduled for March, so you'll start seeing some more information about that. And we just wrapped up some, some tax jobs that we had to do, and we got our 1099s out. So things are going really well. We're starting to get our SOPs and processes more formal in place. But the staff is really working hard, and I'm, I'm very positive about how things are going. Do you have any questions for me? I'm happy to answer.
And again, her report is loaded and to board docs. No questions, let's move on. We're gonna move right into, oh, public safety. In your report, you have, in your board docs, you have two reports for you to review, take a look at. You have any questions? I can even, everybody. Lieutenant Hollinger would be more than happy to answer.
You can see it was pretty quiet. We only had to make one arrest all last month, so it's pretty good. Any questions?
Make sure we don't leave out, uh, Councilman Hill. All right, um, looking at the numbers, one of the, I do want to pass on, so later on in the presentation tonight or the meeting tonight, we're gonna talk about increased enforcement and speeding, and as we start preparing to go into the summer months. You know, we're blessed to have a lot of guests coming to our town that don't know the rules, don't know the speed limits. It's two different speed limits on Chesapeake Avenue. Chesapeake Beach has one, we have one. Not sure, but same road, but two different speed limits. We are gonna probably bring you to the table to sit down and say, what can we do to bring more safety to the waterfront area? You know, there's a lot of stuff going on out there in our environment right now. There's a lot of craziness going on. And one thing that I have heard over and over again from individuals I meet on the boardwalk or walk in town is they come here because they feel so safe.
Yes.
And what we want to do is, we want to get ahead of the curve. We want to get ahead of what's coming as in the crowds. I'm not saying crowds, I'm actually bring crime, but it, when you have that many people in such a condensed area, you know, our waterfront staff really needs to just see your uniform. Just you being around, it helps out a lot. So I just want you, I mean, you're the head guy in charge. I want to make sure that you're ready for that, so know that the conversation's coming. How about anything? I know we've, we've had a couple situations with some individuals that decided to camp out.
Yes.
You know, I know Burn Oaks, we've had it, we've had it in our, our, our own overlook bathrooms and stuff like that. How's that coming along? Is there, what, what can we do as a town, or what do you need from us to help?
Um, well, I mean, there's really one individual that I won't name, but a lot of you probably know. It's somebody we've probably had 100 calls for service with. I mean, we've had a lot between both towns, and we keep just moving this guy around. We'll trespass him from one location, and then he'll pop up in another. He's the one that broke into the restrooms at Wetlands Overlook Park. He has been charged and served with charges for that break-in already, so I'll keep you posted on when the court date is. But that individual was also found a few nights ago sleeping inside the North Beach Post Office. And there was another man with him who had an open warrant for burglary. So he was arrested on the spot a couple nights ago there. So I believe that man is also homeless, and I'm hoping he's not gonna be a recurring problem for us too. So they are probably responsible for a hole that was put in the wall at the post office, but we're still investigating it. So we've questioned them about it, and we got denials. Unfortunately, they don't have any surveillance video in the post office, so.
I do know they're working on that. They ran up the flagpole to get something in there. And just so everybody's clear, you know, somebody's homeless. We, as a town, work with Calvert County to help find a home or help them out. And these individuals we're talking about has 100% said no.
Yeah, this person is willingly, deliberately homeless. He doesn't want any help. He doesn't want anywhere to go. This is how he chooses to live, so.
Keep us in the loop. I appreciate what y'all are doing. Appreciate the deputies out there doing what they're doing. You know, we're gearing up to get busy. I think it's gonna be a busy year, so thank you. Any questions? Nope, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Let's move right into marketing and public relations. Dawn?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have my January report. Seems like January was full of sharing information, whether it be winter readiness, snow removal, closures because of the weather, things like that. We had a lot of that in January. What else? I worked quite a bit on the 2024 State of the Town presentation, gathered lots of information for that, and I believe that will be presented next month. Other than that, if you have any questions, let me know.
Wanted to, just to add, tag on with Dawn, so one of the positives that we get, and we hear it a lot, is that our residents are appreciative of the transparency and the communication that our staff, Dawn, is, is responsible for. They appreciate knowing when things are happening. They all tell me the same thing. You don't see me because we appreciate everything you're doing. And that is because we communicate, and I can tell you not every municipality does, so I want to thank Dawn publicly for keeping us in the goodwill of our residents, our business owners, and our visitors. Makes my job a lot easier. I don't get phone calls from Linda or anybody else about an issue we might have. So keep up the good work. I appreciate what you're doing, and our residents truly appreciate it, so. Everything looks good. Any questions for Dawn before I move on? Nope, all right.
Thank you.
Planning zoning report, Rick? Also, all their reports are in board docs, so if you want to see what we see, it's in there.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Anybody have any questions about the report submitted?
I tell, I tell you what I like to do, though, is we have some improvements coming out that you are directly involved in. Can you just give a snippet? I know it wasn't planned for me to ask this, but.
No, so we're moving, it's very loud. We're moving to a new software for planning zoning code enforcement. That also includes permitting, licensing, inspections. The software will combine everything under one umbrella. Well, it's gonna make things easier for reporting. Definitely make things easier for the council and mayor to see what's going on, be able to get weekly updates, daily updates. It'll also allow the residents to apply for, pay for permits, plan reviews online instead of everything being done by paper.
Moving ahead, guys. We're moving ahead. Lot of work involves. Any questions for Rick?
Is that the Zendesk software?
Civic Plus.
Civic Plus, okay.
So Civic Plus also hosts our website, so it'll integrate easier with what we do now.
Yeah, our goal is just make it one stop. When they get there, they can see everything. They can see the status. You can see how many permits are out for decks, how many permits out for houses. You can see everything. It's transparency. The county has a program now that you can log in, take a look at it, so what we want to do is.
It'll be very similar.
Very similar, cut to the chase. So if you have a question, you can look at it. I see there's something typed up there. Okay, thank you. Any questions for Rick?
Not to get too technical, but as we're setting up these new systems, let's make sure we coordinate with our IT provider for Just Tech, because we probably integrate single sign-on for all these things, so you just log in with the same credentials you currently have. That'll probably get you access to all these things as well, so. Sure to do that.
Yep.
Perfect.
Will do.
Thanks.
Thank you so much, Rick. All right, let's move right into public works. And I know you've seen a lot of this, this gentleman, his crew with the snow.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As the mayor said, this is loud tonight. But as the mayor said, we finally had a winter. Right, I'll stand back here. Like I said, we finally had a winter. We've been spoiled for the last three or four years, as you know, around here, so we kind of got lax. Didn't see snow for a while, and then all of a sudden, bam, we had two events in the last, you know, big event last month, almost 12 inches of snow. And I'd like to just give publicly thank my crew. I've only got four guys, three trucks, three plows, and I thought, you know, for that crew, that size, that, uh, the crew did a great job. I'd like to thank them tonight. And so we, and then we also have been dealing with a lot of winter-related items that come along with the cold weather. We had three or four calls for frozen pipes under the houses. For most of those cases, people didn't have their crawl space vents closed up, so next week it's gonna get cold again, so I'd like to, we'll probably send out another reminder to look at that type of thing. We did have a couple water main breaks with the cold weather, and we also had some sewer issues with sewer clogs. When it gets cold like that, the grease tends to get harder quicker, so that causes problems with the sewer system also. So we did routine jetting. We did jetting to three or four residents, clear problems. We already had to clean out at the residence. It did break that free, so when we had to dig up actually two sewer cleanouts and replace them, but that will also help with the infiltration. We found cracked pipes on both of those. When we tried to jet, the jetter actually got stuck, so we dug it up, replaced that. But it was some groundwater probably going in those pipes, so that fixed, so that'll help us with that. Also this month, we've taken time in the office with the cold weather, with the, the staff that we have. I really like to thank them, because with the CIP, list that you council people saw last week, we didn't, you know, we hadn't really been going through those projects, really fine tuning the budgets on them and coming up. Now we have a nice list we can look at. Hopefully y'all got a chance to look at that list and really have that cleaned up and ready to start with the RFPs. Does anybody have any questions?
Nope, thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any snow blowers?
Pardon me?
Snow blowers, industrial snow blowers.
Um, we have two, yes, and we did this past, we, we had them. They were sitting there for probably five years without running. We got them in running condition. And this snow event that just happened, we did do the bike path, and we used them, and they worked pretty well for that. So our main problem is manpower. When we, you know, to use a snow blower, we tried to do the streets and all first because we only have the four people, but then we, after that, like the next day, that's when we're gonna try to focus on, like the post office is a busy area, and the, you know, bike path, a lot of people walking the boardwalk, so we, we hit those areas in front of town, all the museum, around the library. But we do have two walk behind snow blowers.
All right, any other questions? Thank you.
Yep, just thank you and thank the crew.
Thank you.
Waterfront Department is, was not able to attend, so please look at their report. As you know, we have Phil and Emma down there. We do have a couple other full-time staff now. They jumped on some of the snow also, but reports in there. You have any questions? Please reach out to Linda if you have any questions. Let's move right into public comments. The town of North Beach welcomes public comments. Please limit your public comments to three minutes. Public comments will also be taken in the chat box. Do we have any public comments? Not. If you think of something later, please reach out. All right, we do not have any ordinance and resolutions. Let's move right into the vice president election. As you know, each year the council elects a new vice president. This is discussed between them. They vote on it, and I'd like to turn it over to our current VP, Mickey Hummel, to make this.
Thank you. I would like to nominate Mary if she's up for it.
A second, that. We have a question, we have a second. Any discussion? Mary?
Thank you. I accept. I accept. I guess there's no turning back now, right?
I don't know. Recorded. The motion, we have a second. Any further discussion except for Mary? I'm joking. You can discuss. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. So moved. Congratulations, Mary. We do need you to come in, we do need you to come in and get with Stacy and Linda or somebody, Joe. All right, Linda, because we gotta get you on a card and all that stuff, so.
Okay, okay, I'll arrange that.
All right. Let's move into the next item. Item B, 9B, is a contract award for Wetlands Overlook Park. All the documentation is in your folder. I believe Amanda's gonna, who's discussing this? Exactly, there we go.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Amanda Odell, procurement for our town of North Beach. The purpose of this contract is to remove and replace two 12-foot gazebos and one 12-foot pergola at the Wetlands Overland Park, North Beach. Bids were publicly solicited on our website as well as email and marketplace. Four bids were received. The bid tabulation is, was attached to the, the board docs as well. After the bids were thoroughly reviewed, it was determined that the apparent low bidder, Coastline LLC, was the, Coastline LLC was the apparent low bidder. However, there was a requirement within the contract that a contractor must be established three years in business, and it was a formality that was not going to be waived. Therefore, the next lowest bidder was Garner Exteriors, and they meet all the requirements of the specifications and have also provided the town with satisfactory services in the past. Funding for this contract has been allocated through a grant for the Maryland Department of Natural Resources Local Parks and Programs Playgrounds Infrastructure Program. The award for this is $52,278 for the replacement of the pergolas and gazebos, and the additional money is towards improving the bathrooms and then doing the storyboard for for North Beach, and that gives us about $19,722 remaining of the grant money. Staff recommends that we award the, staff recommends that the council award the, the contract award to the lowest responsive bidder, Garner Exteriors, from Lothian, Maryland, in the amount of $52,278.
All right, so we have a recommendation on the table. Before we go into the voting, do we have any discussion that I would like to go over? We're excited to have the state of Maryland paying for this. Been over here lately, you can tell they're really needed. They have been worn and used. All right, so no further discussion. Can I have a motion to, to award the contract to Garner Exteriors LLC for $52,278 to replace two gazebos and one pergola? We have a motion, do, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Amanda, thank you. All right. Let's move right into on your, on your, on your seat, I, I put a, a brief printout of, so last week, I want to thank y'all for stepping up, and I apologize, I could not make it to the work session. I had some family matters to handle. Mickey, I want to thank you. I heard you did a phenomenal job. You know, I know we've talked about this probably over the last 115 years, but the good news is, I think we have some low-hanging fruit we can knock out pretty quick. In your presentation last week that y'all had, and y'all have had a week to review it and take a look at it, we have some immediate improvements that we can knock out quickly. And then we have some long-term items that I believe that council, we will have to come back to a work session for y'all to dig, dig into it. There's, those are more impactful, those are, have the residents more involved. I don't think that's something that you could move forward yet, in my opinion, until we have some more information. But truly, we need your input on those long-term items. Staff and myself have exhausted conversations with other municipalities, with professionals. You name it, Google, AI, ChatGPT, you name it. We've done everything we can. So what I put together was the top items that we can move forward to with DPW and contractors are signage, striping, shoulder enhancement, the education, outreach, speed awareness, increase enforcement. Now let me, and it was brought to my attention, it wasn't very clear, so I apologize. The areas we're talking about are for mixed-use areas, so that means Chesapeake Avenue East, so all of Chesapeake Avenue, Bay Avenue, Annapolis Avenue, Atlantic Avenue, also the, the, the First Street, Second Street, Third, Fifth, Seventh, Eighth, and Ninth, that connect those two streets. These are all mixed. These are all mixed-use, um, zoned in, and what we want to do is, these items here, we believe could make a big impact on improving the situation for our residents. There is no one fix. I feel very confident after too many conversations to talk about, that there is not one, but we can improve it. Signage, replace and improve existing signage, thirty-eight fifty, striping and painting of curbs, forty-five sixty, shoulder enhancement on Eighth and Ninth, and what that, and that's between Chesapeake and Bay. We have the survey determine town right-ofways, excavating material, curb and gutter, replace old water saddles, now before I move on, I got a show and tell for you. DB, can you please go show our council what our water saddles look like now? Not all, not all, so don't think all of them. All right, awe, DB said awe. There they go, well.
Here you see. Okay. The recent water main breaks we had, uh, I guess a couple weeks ago. This is a, a saddle, what this does, this wraps around the main water line, and this supplies water to your house, copper pipe here. Everybody called me a little late, so I didn't get time to cut the copper pipe off.
We thought it was a crutch for you, getting old.
This will be seen off to the house, this is on the main line under the streets, and we talked about this, every one that we dig up, I'm amazed, there's still on there, anything that's holding in place is probably the dirt that's happened. When it gets cold like this, and the ground starts shifting and freezing, falling, that dirt moves, guarding whatever, this cracks and whatever, and then, yeah, a water main break, so this flows off the main pond, that can be seen on the news, water blowing up. That, this is our main problem in town, the rest of the pipe is all C-900 pipe, which is plastic pipe. We do have valves that are made of this material, but these, we probably have five hundred and sixteen, five hundred and eighty saddles in the ground, probably, I'd say ninety-five, ninety-nine percent look like this. This is, this rock, this long tube show, this is what they, we replaced them with, so this will be a new stainless steel saddle, this is where.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh yeah, sorry about that, Mary.
Yes. Here's the old, here's the new. Like I said, anybody can see, they didn't use, uh, code of general issues, like they're a hundred back in the day, uh, the system was put in by the ninety-one, ninety-two, but this is what, what used, is, you know, back in the time, it was that's what they thought, this is stainless steel, rubber, honey, once you put this on, you do get it.
So the reason why I want, uh, Donnie to bring that is because, in my mind, you don't pave a street, fix a street, unless you fix a saddle, it just makes sense. So then you go down curb and gutter, replace old saddles, then repave the whole street. Again, this is Eighth Street and Ninth Street between Chesapeake and Bay. What this is going to do is, it's gonna allow proper parking, it's gonna help with the flooding, or it's gonna help with stormwater management, and we can fix the saddles at the same time. So we can jump on this pretty quick, um, staff has been directed to jump on it once we get the approval. So what I'm asking for tonight is, after the presentation last week, just gotta get my numbers, I just want to make sure my numbers are right. After the presentation last week, after seeing the saddle and what's going on, and then the pricing that we got for you, what I would like to have is an approval, a motion to allow us to move forward with implementing, I'm not sure this is the right word, but low-hanging fruit for us when it comes to parking. It's the, the things that we can have the most impact with the least impact on our residents right now, and we can have it all done, close, hopefully, before the season starts, now, if we keep getting forty, you know, snow every week, I mean, that's, don't hold us to that. So I'm gonna open up for discussion, and it's all on that sheet, and I'll get this loaded, I just did this tonight, so I'll get Stacy to load this into board docs too, I apologize. Any questions?
No questions, I, I agree with doing the saddles now, and I think on that section of Eighth Street Two, the water table and Ninth, the water table's low too, right? So we're probably getting some extra corrosion there versus other streets, so.
So.
So that all makes sense to do that now before we cover it back up, instead of having to go back in later on and cut it back open and fix it.
It's, so. If, i- it's, it's bad, it's going around, you look, WSSC has a hundred and, I don't know, it's just outrageous right now what's going on with the water out there, water and sewer, there's bills out there right now with water and sewer, so. What other questions, Mickey, uh, uh, Councilman, Councilwoman, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, I think it's a good idea, I, my questions were last week with, um, Donnie, re, you know, regarding the curb and gutter, so I'm, I'm good with this, I think it's a great idea, the restriping, doing this, it's, you know, it's inevitable, it does need to be done.
All right, thank you, any?
I have, I have a few questions, dealing with the striping and painting, is that going to be our diagonal?
No.
This is just plain Jane, where it is, what, right there, just doing it up?
We're gonna fix the measurements, fix the sizes, and do exactly what I have now. When we go back, um, into work session for y'all, you're gonna have to decide what you want to do, if you want to take a street one way, not one way, the diagonal can only happen if you take a street one way. That is not something you should make a decision of quickly, because that's gonna disrupt traffic patterns, and you're gonna have, it's gonna be, you know, it's a lot to go to that, so that's gotta go back to session for y'all.
And if this is, if there are contractors involved, are these under current contracts that we have, or is it going to be new contracts?
Um, Amanda?
Yep.
Mentioned something earlier, but go ahead.
Yep, we can, um, there are two different options that we can do, we can put it out for bid to obtain a new contractor to do the work, but we can also reach out to Calver County Government and some of the sister counties, we have the possibility to maybe piggyback on some of their paving contracts, but I'm gonna look into that, um, next week and reach out to my counterparts over there and see if there's any options for us to do that.
Okay.
Our goal is to piggyback.
Okay.
That's where we find the best cost and the quickest return.
And that's all, all right.
Councilman Tron Cohen.
No, I'm good.
All right, Councilman Dotson.
Just make sure we talk to the residents on those streets before we start in, I think. Uh, there will be some blowback.
It is, and, and that's the reason why the surveys, because, uh, we want to make sure they understand, are educated on tra, town right-ofways. It's the two streets that we have that, that have not really that have, have taken over town right-ofway, so we, we will educate.
Yeah, please do.
We've gone rogue.
It will also, like, this type of work also will be, uh, probably a couple-day aspect, like, it's not like a one-and-done day thing, so we'll have to have good communication too on planning of, hey, this side of the shoulders closed and whatnot, this is where you can park in the meantime, and stuff like that.
Absolutely. Absolutely, one hundred percent, I promise you, guarantee your communication will take place. I have staff, you know, whatever we gotta do to make sure.
Councilwoman will probably be letting us hear about it.
Well, her side of the street's fine.
I'm, I'm on the curb side, you know, but I have talked to a few residents on the other side about it, and they actually like the idea. At least the residents on Ninth, halfway down, I haven't gotten to all of them, but Eighth, I'm not so sure.
Councilwoman, raise your right hand real quick. All right, she volunteered to talk to him, all right, guys, so we can move on. All right, any other questions? All right, can I have a motion to approve to move forward with the plans presented?
So move.
Can we?
Second.
Hold on, timeout, timeout. I just read them.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
All right, what, what do you want me to say differently? All right, all right.
And, hold, hold up, and something about piggybacking off the contracts, because
All right, I, I move that
I think we tried this once before last year, and we had an issue.
Yep, I'll, I'll move that we follow this lineup that we have with the prices, hoping to piggyback to get the best possible prices we can.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Get us in the right direction.
All right, any, so we have a motion?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Need discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All right, we'll jump right on it tomorrow. All right. Well, let's see here, that's done, all right, um, let's go right into council reports, I'm gonna let Councilwoman Healy go first.
Um, well, first of all, I want to congratulate the ladies of charity, you know, um, they always show up, they do a great job. Polar plunge was great, I'm glad they finally got their check, and that everything is moving in the right direction with the build, and I look forward to that ribbon cutting. Um, also, Public Works, thank you, like, amazing job, this snow this time was so heavy and wet. Like, and it just, it was relentless, it kept coming and coming and coming. I saw you guys out there late at night, I, cause I was out there trying to keep up with it myself for the next day, but I woke up in the morning, the streets were clear, like, I could get out, like, I was very happy, so, um, and my daughter's a nurse, she left to go to work at, I want to say like, it was like four-thirty, five in the morning, and she said, you know, the roads were fine. Um, you know, and of course, uh, I want to thank Mark Frazier for all his years of service with the town and the county, and, um, definitely gonna be missed at events, definitely gonna be missed around town, um, you know, just an all-around great person, great guy, and, uh, did a lot for our town, I really appreciate him, and I will miss him.
Thank you so much. Councilman Hummel.
Thank everybody for coming out and sticking with us. And this Sunday is the Fossil Road Show, put on by the Bayside History Museum with Dr. Stephen Godfrey. Um, and I think that has brain urine fossils and fossils that are found in the local area and whatnot. March is very busy with Sundays for more of the history museum talks. I'll see everybody next month.
Thank you, Councilman Wilcox.
Uh, congratulations to the ladies of charity, uh, my daughter is one part of the junior, uh, ladies of charity, she's now a vice president for this year, so give her kudos for that. Uh, and I just want to say, um, uh, I'm greatly saddened by the passing of Mark Frazier. Um, first time I met him was the opening of the Boys and Girls Club, when that started, and then soon after he decided to run, and I've been here pretty much on and off ever since. Uh, so I want to thank him for his mentoring over the years. And, uh, everyone try to stay warm, because we're going cold again. So thanks.
Councilman Tron Cohen.
I just want to echo the comments from the other council members as well, thanks to Public Works for all the great work with the, the snow. I was very surprised to wake up yesterday and basically see no impact on the roads, like, everything was perfectly ready to go, so, uh, great, great job with that to, to you and your staff. Um, also, yes, same with, uh, former Mayor Frazier, uh, I, one quick note with that, I talked to him many years ago, uh, when I first came on the council, and I was just asking him questions about, you know, obviously, he, he's very well-known for the impact he's had here in the, in the town, and helping, uh, get us to where we are today. And my question to him was like, okay, like, where did you start, like, what, what, the guy helped turn the town around, and, uh, he, he responded, he said, I, I started by walking around just picking up trash, because that's what needed to be done, wasn't glamorous, um, wasn't something he did to get elected, it was just something that the town needed to have happen. And I kind of really, kind of hit me as like, yeah, big changes can start with like really small things, just like picking up trash, so, uh, just something I'll, I'll remember, I think, uh, for the rest of my life, but really, really great mayor and great leader, and he will definitely be missed.
Thank you. Councilman Dotson.
Uh, thanks everyone for coming out, um, yeah, I, uh, met Mark in July two thousand and five, the same month that my wife and I moved to town, and Mark was walking down the street, doing his thing, and he stopped by and talked to us for a while, and next thing I knew, he was talking me into getting into politics. Next year, boom, here I am, so, uh, had some good times, uh, with Mark, uh, as Ken said, he was, uh, a mentor. We didn't always agree, but the thing about when we stepped off this dice, it was left here. You know, we could still go on over to the West Line on an early night, have a cigar and a drink and laugh about things and didn't bother him, and I appreciated that about Mark, and that's one of the things I respected him for, and, uh, yeah, he'll be missed. Uh, but his legacy, as we know, lives on. Parks is a good perfect expression of that, so. Thank you all again for coming out, be safe out there. And Donnie, yes, I heard your crew going down my street, I didn't see them, but I could hear them, so they did a good job. And, uh, that's it.
Thank you so much, um, a, a couple things I'd like to absolutely support DPW, I had the pleasure of, of being around them throughout the whole snowstorm, and the hours they put in was amazing. But also, they thought about it before they just did it. What you'll find a lot of places, and Donnie and I have had this discussion, um, you know, we thought about how the best to handle it, how to attack it, also do it physically responsible, thinking about it, and, um, and that's the reason I think they were so successful, because they, they had a plan, they put the plan in place, they worked the plan, so thank you for that, Donnie. Um, I had the, um, pleasure today of going to Annapolis with Linda, and we were able to get to Senator Jackson's office, we had some great conversations in there, we got to go to Delegate Fisher's office, we got to go to Maryland Municipal League. There is a lot of craziness up in Annapolis right now, there's thr, fifty-three days left, they, they, they all were, they were eager to tell me, and the deficit is looming, it's large, uh, there's over three thousand bills that they are looking at. Most of them will be gutted and never make it, they said probably twenty percent. But there are changes coming from Annapolis that will affect our residents, and as we get to know them and see them and learn about them, I promise you, we will do our best to educate our residents, but also our, our staff, because there are some things that they're trying to pass that will affect our staff and town hall and so forth, so. We will continue to, once it gets to the point that is serious, which some of them are, most of them are not, we will let you know, but it was a great trip, we got a lot of, meet a lot of good people, have a lot of good conversations, so I truly appreciate everybody coming tonight. You know, it's, it's an enjoyable, uh, meeting when we all get together and able to do things for our residents, so I want to thank you for being here. So we're gonna move, I need a motion to close the February thirteenth twenty-twenty-five tw, town council meeting and enter into a closed session under the Maryland Code General Provision, Article three dash three oh five B seven, to consult with council to obtain legal advice in Article three dash three oh five B eight, to consult with staff, constituents, or other individuals about the potential litigation regarding the resolution of an issue with a vendor for the town of North Beach regarding monies owed, the vendor and associated contract. Pending litigation, pending, see, that's probably when I read it, pending litigation. I apologize for messing that up, you all have a motion.
So move.
So move, second, any, second, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All right, let's move right into, thank you, everyone. You don't have to go home, you just can't stay here.